The October 4th, 2017 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. I would like to note that Mayor Goodman is excused. I would like to also comment here that if any of you saw her on TV, I think she did a magnificent job in conveying to the public how much our city cares and how much and how hard she worked during that awful time. And Councilman Anthony is with us. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable, Channel 2, and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communications can view this program in high definition on Channel 1002. The council meeting as well as all other KCLV programming can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM and also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This announcement is that this building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of chambers out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has a need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street, please be sure to have your ticket validated by security officers when exiting. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Rabbi Yitzhak Wine? Young Israel Aish.
It's Yitzhak Wine and Young Israel Aish. But thank you, that was perfect.
Well, I tried.
You're great.
Of Las Vegas, and please remain standing for the pitch.
Thank you. I want to again share my gratitude to the council for, Mayor Protem, for inviting me and giving me the opportunity to share a few thoughts and a blessing. This is an incredibly sad time for Las Vegas and for our entire community with the tragedy that occurred just the other day. And, you know, if something happens in Argentina, we take note. If something happens in Atlanta, you take more of a note. Something happens in our backyard, it's a wake-up call, and it's a rattling of the cage, so to speak. It seems that we all know somebody who was affected directly, or we all know somebody who knows somebody who was directly affected. And it is a time that whereas we stop and recognize that we don't know why God allows evil to persist in this world, it says in the Bible, "When Moses turned to God and said, 'Show me your face,' God's response was, 'No man can see my face and live.'" And our, the Jewish tradition is that what Moses was asking to see God's face, and as much as God does not have a face, was to know why does, why do bad things happen to good people? Why does evil exist in this world? And God's response is, to be a human being, there's certain things you're never going to know, and you just have to be okay with that. At the same time, we still, we fight evil, and we still recognize that when events happen, there's something we can learn from it, and there's some way that we can grow. This tragedy fell on the day after Yom Kippur. Yom Kippur is the, is a, it's a Jewish holiday, but it's really a holiday for the world. It is a day filled with ambivalence in the respect that we fast. It's a 25-hour fast, and no eating or drinking or washing or anything like that. It's a day of forgiveness, a day of atonement. We ask forgiveness from each other, we ask forgiveness from the Almighty. But it's a happy day in the respect that we recognize that God loves us more than we could even love our own children, and that the Almighty is willing to embrace us if we are truly sorry and, and we want to be better people. It's interesting, in synagogues around the world, the piece from the Bible we read began with, "This happened after the death of the sons of Aharon." Now, and then it doesn't talk about how these two people died. The only thing it talks about is that these two people, Aaron, Moses' brother, his children, were very righteous, and that the death of the righteous brings an atonement for the world. Why is that? Because if you have a righteous person, a person who's doing good for others, and when they're around, the rest of us look and say, "Okay, I guess, you know, people are giving to charity, people are helping, people are moving, they're doing what they need to do." But when the God takes them from this world, all of a sudden, there's a void, and the rest of us have an opportunity to move up, to step up our actions of kindness, our actions of goodness, and, and our charitable deeds. And when tragedy happens, we need something to do. And there was a lot of good that was pulled from the world, in an unexplainable way, the other day. And there's a lot of people that are still suffering right now, the people that were, that were present. And this is our opportunity to step up our game, so to speak. It's our opportunity to be kinder, to show more compassion, more caring for our community. This body over here is dedicated to building Las Vegas and making our world, on a local level, a better place. And when things, tragedies happen, we have to allow this not only to inspire us, but for us to direct ourselves and others to be much better people than we ever have been in the past. And the danger is always, of course, that tomorrow, tonight, we go to sleep, and tomorrow we wake up, and we're back to business as usual. But let us keep in mind what happened, and let us inspire ourselves, inspire others, to do better, to be better, and to help others be better. And by doing so, we will create an atonement for this world, and we will sanctify the, the tragic events that happened. If I may, I just want to close with a more of a formal prayer and blessing. This is for the souls that were taken from this world, that the Almighty should oversee them, they should go to the highest places of heaven. And I also want to say for all those that are, that are still suffering from the, from the tragedy, whether it be in a physical vein or an emotional vein, may, may it be he who blessed our forefathers, Abraham, Isaac, and Jacob, Moses, and Aaron, David, and Solomon, may he bless and heal all of the sick people. And in reward for this, may the Almighty act with compassion to restore their health, to heal them, strengthen them, and to revive them amongst the other sick people, a recovery of the soul and a recovery of the body swiftly and soon. And now let us all say amen.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you, Rabbi.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Protem? Is it possible that some people are in the audience who still expect us to do ceremonial today?
Well, I, I was getting into that.
Oh.
Okay, just one second. We are not having our ceremony today because we did not feel it would be appropriate at this time of mourning, which I know we all have. And I am going to ask if each of the councilmen would say a few words relating to their feelings and their concerns, so that each of you have a time to voice. I'll begin with our senior member, Mr. Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. First and foremost, I'm going to give all honor and praise to God, who's most definitely the head of my life, and for blessing me with the opportunity to be here once again, to sit on this day, is to legislate on behalf of the great citizens here in the city of Las Vegas. I am very thankful for my family, and I'm very thankful for this community. I'm very thankful for the first responders and all of the medical service providers, the tourists, the residents who all came together as one community to, in fact, work collectively to address an immediate need that took place a few nights ago. I would like to impress upon everybody that we can't live a life of fear. We cannot allow fear to drive us from doing what we know is the right thing to do. And so therefore, I ask that you pull from within, however you pull that from you, from yourself, to use it as strength to help someone whose despair, someone who feels as though they do not have a voice, someone who just needs a shoulder to cry on. Because we are a great community, we are a great state, we are a great nation, this is a great world that we live in, and, in the words of my father, "Live it to your fullest, because we only turn this corner one time, so let's make the best of it." So therefore, I'll close with, God bless each and every one of you, and thank you so very much for all the things that you've done, small or large, as it relates to pulling together as a community of one to support the tragic event that has transpired within the Las Vegas community. And let's not forget that there are other communities just like us, domestic and abroad, that have been impacted in similar ways, whether it be through weather or through negative, demonic acts of violence around the world. So let's keep those other communities in mind and in our prayers as well. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
You're welcome. And now we will have our next in line, Mr. Stavros Anthony.
Well, I'm not sure what to say. I mean, I mean, just like everybody, we woke up this morning, and it was probably just another typical day, and came into City Hall, everybody's going back to work and back to school, and unfortunately, three days ago, that was not the case. I mean, it was mass chaos and a complete disaster in Las Vegas. And, I mean, the, really, the first people I think of are the first responders. I mean, I, I was with Metro for 29 years, and, but I just couldn't imagine our police officers and our firefighters and our paramedics that were down on, in that, right in that war zone. And the only thing they're thinking of is, you know, "I gotta, I gotta save a life, I gotta go towards the bullets, I gotta go towards the danger, I gotta get a team together and take this guy out before he kills more people." And you got firefighters that are going into an area where there's, you know, bullets flying, and that's not normally what they do. And paramedics, these are private citizens that are down there doing the same thing, and just, you know, hats off to them for, for doing that. And I just kind of worry a little bit that, as the weeks go on, these folks are going to be, I mean, that was a traumatic situation, so I hope we continue to think about them. The, our, our, our medical team, our doctors and nurses and administrators in these hospitals, I mean, can you imagine 500, over 500 people coming into a hospital, all these hospitals shot, and the medical attention that they needed? I mean, what, what chaos. But they stepped up. I mean, they stepped up, and I guarantee you, these, these first responders and our medical profession saved a lot of lives that night. We lost a lot of lives, a lot of people are still hurt, a lot of people are still, are still in the hospital, and they're going to get the best medical care. But last night, over in the Northwest Area Command, myself and Councilwoman Fiori and Commissioner Brown had a candlelight vigil over at Mountain Crest Park, over in the northwest part of the valley, which is right between Wards 4 and Ward 6, and Commissioner Brown, and there was a couple 300 residents that showed up. I had no idea how many were going to show up, we just kind of put this together at the last minute. And a couple 300 residents showed up because they wanted to pray for the people that died, they wanted to pray for the people that are still injured, they wanted to pray for the first responders and make sure they're going to be okay in the future. And I was very proud of that. I was very proud to see our residents that didn't have to show up there, that came out because that is the one thing they could do, is to show up and listen to our faith-based leaders give some very inspiring messages about God and Jesus Christ and, and where we are today. And it was, it was very inspiring to be with a group like that. So this is a great city, this is one of the most tragic, I mean, the last time anything close to this was when I first moved here in 1980, was the MGM fire, but this is twice as big. And we're going to get through it, we want to make sure that the people are still injured, get back home to, whether it's in Las Vegas or someplace in the country, and we're going to learn from this. But, you know, this is a day that everybody's going to remember exactly where they were when they first heard about this shooting. Everybody's going to remember that. So God bless this city for responding the way it did, and I, I think we're going to be okay. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you, Mary, Amir. Did I do that to the other mayor too, you know? Thank you, Mayor Protem. I, I'm angry about the whole thing, and I was angry Sunday night when it started happening, and it actually allowed me, allowed me to sleep because I have seen this coming for a long time. And I know the hotels had done their best to prepare, but who could have predicted this one? No, nobody could have predicted that a person with extremely careful planning and unlimited resources could become a one-man killer of hundreds of people. He didn't run out of ammunition, he may have killed himself before he finished shooting all he had at hand. But if you listen to the soundtrack, listen to the soundtrack, just close your eyes when you see a replay of some of this stuff, and listen to the fire, listen to that rapid fire, non-stop. At one point, I know somebody's timed out 90 rounds in a few seconds. That is only enabled by our own stupidity and our own inability to work, to live, think, and govern, because the, the idea, it's, it's a recent idea, you know, that we have unlimited rounds at our disposal for whatever purpose you might have, including protection, of course. But yet, the way you deliver that death is in such a non-stop stream that it's really the kind of thing that's reserved for the military and for our well-regulated militia, which is our Army and Air Force National Guard, which we have here in Nevada. So we've got our own well-regulated militia here, as permitted under the Constitution. What we don't have is common sense and brains. When I think about, you know, ants were still running around our property, and yesterday I looked at a stream of ants trolling across my driveway, and I stepped on the flow, not really by accident, I don't, I mean, I don't like to kill people, I don't like to kill ants. And I killed them. And I watched as they quickly filled the gap, and they kept doing it over and over again until suddenly, the next phalanx of ants in front smelled death, they smelled, through the pheromones, they smell something that, that's ingrained in them, that we have to change. They go different way, they either go a different way, or they go back where they came from, but they learn from their mistake, they learn from actions. Ants apparently have a very small brain, but it's enough to know when you have had enough punishment. The discussion on this unlimited firepower floating around willy-nilly in the hands of the public, and particularly those who can afford it, is disgraceful. Death hangs on the people who allow these things to continue to happen. Congress has failed to act, I don't know why. It has to be Congress to limit the size of the clips. My World War II, .303 Royal Enfield rifle has a five-shot clip, and they thought that was pretty good for bolt action. And then when I was in the Army in the 60s, we had the M1 with an eight-round clip, imagine that, and you didn't have to cock it, you just had to squeeze the trigger. It was like magic. And now, we've got 30-rounders, 50-round, 250-round clips in the form of drums, available to purchase. You have the new device called a bump stock, which really quite easily then apparently turns a semi-automatic AR-15 or any other kind of rifle like that into an automatic rifle. Now, this should be our learning experience. Our learning experience probably should have happened many years ago, on the first mass domestic violence, domestic terrorist act. I mean, we, we've had so many, all created by residents of our country, residents of our country. They don't fit a particular category, they just look like an old man like me, Monday. And I thought, we haven't learned. Sandy Hook, Orlando, Oklahoma City, many other crimes like this, mass killings are, call them by name, caused by people who look like us, yet there seems to be this focus on people of another color who must be doing great damage to us. The, the damage is us, as Pogo said, you know, Walt Kelly's cartoon, "We have found the enemy and it is us." So how stupid do we have to be to let this continue? How stupid are we? Are we dumber than ants? That's going to be the real question here. I hear people saying, "Well, let's not talk about this now, because that's political." Hell, it's not political, it's survival. You and I, and nobody else on this council that I know of, needs that sort of action. But there are people out there who need it, and they like to practice with it and all that, but there are some people who have it for a different reason. I say, let's be careful about who gets what, and let's not be afraid to take action. And the members of Congress are all saying, "Well, this is not the time to talk about it." That'll be for another day. And I say, "If not now, when?" Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Saroka.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, clearly, we are a grieving community, but at the same time, I am proud of our community's unity, how we rose up and we continue to stand with each other, regardless of our backgrounds, regardless of the labels that others will try to put on us, regardless of the divisiveness that we hear spoken of, we defied, and we continue to defy, all of that. I have high praise for our community leaders, and I have high praise for our first responders who did what many could not do. We are leaders in our community and in our nation with our security and our care for our local residents, as well as the many visitors that come and that we embrace every week in the Las Vegas community. Let us be an example, let us continue to be an example of that unity as we go forward. The character of a community is defined by how it pulls itself together, not in the initial moments, but in the days and weeks and months that follow. Let us defy the labels that others want to put on us. Let us defy the fear that incidents like this are intended to create. Let us step into the shoes of those that have the better ideas. Let us challenge ourselves every day to be better members of our community. And let's have the Las Vegas Valley be an example to the rest of the nation on how to come together and care. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Councilwoman Fiori.
Thank you. You know, as I address our fellow Las Vegas folks and our tourists that are here and people that are watching us, number one, I want to make sure that you truly understand what Vegas Strong means. And Vegas Strong means the good that happened after the tragedy, all of our police from everywhere, from Metro, from Henderson, from North Las Vegas, all of our fire departments, all of our ambulances, we had over 100 ambulances out there, and all of our people, from Las Vegans to our guests here in Las Vegas. They saved each other, they protected each other, they worked together. This is Vegas Strong. And this was a really big tragedy. And one of the things I'm going to say is, being Vegas Strong, that means we here in Vegas will not live in fear, we will live in faith. And as the rabbi said before, the dangerous part of this is when you wake up the next day and go on with business as usual. Well, it is not business as usual. And in the coming weeks, this tragedy will, as it already has been politicized, will continue to be politicized, and we'll have our eye off of the true cause. I was a former legislator up in Carson City, and you can look at my record, and you can look at the legislation that I've drafted on doing study of psychotropic drugs. Last night, when Commissioner Brown and Councilwoman Stavros Anthony and myself were in the northwest at the Lone Mountain Park, praying for the souls that left us, and praying for their family and friends, afterwards, there was a lot of news media there, and I spoke with folks from, from Sweden, and folks from China, and folks here. And this touches my heart very, very intensely. My daughter Savannah, who's 23, goes to that concert every year. And she didn't go this year because I have a new grandbaby, Gemma, who's 10 weeks old. My other daughter Sheena, who's my executive assistant, she stood in line for eight hours to give blood, and the top of her scalp is sunburnt. As I spoke to these news folks at that vigil last night, and I looked at all of the people that came from across the valley to pray, the only thing I could think of is us and ourselves, and how would you feel if someone was taken away from you? And so I need you guys to look into the legislation that I have proposed up in Carson City and the, and the study of psychotropic drugs. These drugs were originally formulated in the military to make an aggressive soldier, to change your mindset. And it's the mindset that pulls the trigger, it's not the gun. And when we look at this morning's headlines, we're talking about psychotropic drugs that make you aggressive, that are passed off as antidepressants, things women for PMS. These drugs were formulated as a killing machine. And any drug in your house that tells you, "This drug may cause suicide or homicidal thoughts," please stop taking the drug and call your doctor immediately. This is our problem, guys, the mindset. Because if any one of you, any one of us up here on this bench were to take a drug like that, we could probably act in that same way. So as I pray for our souls, I also pray for all of our electeds, for Washington DC, for our President of the United States, Mr. Donald Trump, to start that study about psychotropic drugs. And let's get through the true nature of how this happens, and all of these mass shootings across America. The shooter was on some formulated psychotropic drug. My prayers are with Las Vegas, and we are Vegas Strong. Thank you.
Councilwoman, thank you. I was able yesterday to review the background and pictures of those who had lost their lives last Sunday evening, and I saw such a diversity, black, white, Asian, Hispanic, and others, the very young, their faces filled with brightness and hope, and the promise and pride of mothers and fathers and grandparents, you could see it reflected in their faces. And as I read what they each did, I saw some who were policemen, some who were carpenters, some who just were homemakers, it just all kinds of different occupations. some who just were homemakers, just all kinds of different occupations. And I said to myself, this is a slice of humanity. These people represent us. They are us. Those people who were shot and killed represent every single one of us. And so, we can relate so closely. I love country music and I love bumping shoulders with those who hope, jump up and down and to hold in their hearts such a strong love of America and its heritage. Those are the types of people who were there that evening. I would have been there myself with my grandson, except he had to go to college earlier than expected and so, he could not go and I did not go. I had two nieces there that, as you see those crawling on TV, they were in that crowd and they were crawling. And as our councilman said, Anthony said to us, the trauma's going to stay there for so long. I mean, the trauma they had crawling and trying to get behind something to protect them and it was something I think that we almost feel unbelievable in. But I wanted to say that so many of us, as I mentioned, have a close connection and here in the city, we have one too. And the one we've lost is Cameron Robinson, an employee in the city attorney's office. He was smart, personable, friendly, happy and really a remarkable human being. He loved learning new things and he never failed at anything he tried. If anyone needed help, he was who you asked. Literally, he knew something about everything and was always willing to teach you how to do something if you were struggling with it. He had a great thirst for knowledge. He would often sing while working and walk by you and make a face if he thought you needed to smile. He had a great sense of humor and I can say for all of us and for all of the attorney's office who are here today, that he will be deeply missed. We have other coworkers who have been involved in this, who are still being helped and whose names we cannot mention because of the code in medical that you don't mention the names of those who are still in the hospital, but we have two more there too. What happened Sunday evening is beyond tragic. Our hearts sink with sadness at the loss of life, the trauma that many others will live with the rest of their life. And yet, it swells with pride of country and our fellow human beings. It really swells, I could feel it within me, as we see how much was done. Our great first responders, all our medical people, how proud we are of them and how proud the entire country is and how our country finally sees us, not as just a city where you all go have fun and everything stays in Las Vegas or Sin City or anything like that. It knows what we are, human beings who care. I went to bring food to the hospitals yesterday, no, excuse me, Monday, and I got there with food and my goodness, within the time I was there, other food kept pouring in and pouring in from almost every single place we know here in town. I tried to pay the restaurant that puts the sandwiches and things together for me, the man would not accept one penny. He said, let me be of help. I'm going to help, we all are going to help. That love and that caring and that willingness, that's part of Las Vegas and that's who we are. And finally, finally, others are realizing that. I also wanted to say that the courage that we had working at UMC, they were eight hours, the surgeon, eight hours without a minute break in surgery with, you know, the blood all over the place. Eight hours they did, and that was all of the hospitals doing that. And I just want to emphasize again, even though we sink in our hearts with the sadness of it all, we swell in our hearts and we soar in our hearts, knowing the pride we have for those who wanted to help, the pride we have on how caring we are. My daughter goes and others have mentioned it, to give blood, eight hours, and that was on Monday, early, eight hours. After we gave the food to the hospitals and they had a lot coming in, they said, take it to the blood agencies, they need water and they need snacks. And before we could get there, we're hearing, don't bring anymore, we're just inundated with it. Now, how fast could you respond and how strong could you see? All of our first responders were so great, our mayor was so great, I think in what she said, she called him a diabolical psycho and I was glad she said that. It was strong, it was the strongest thing said against him and he deserved every word. Our sheriff was so good in how he conveyed the information and you could see how hurt those people were. And they were hurting for Vegas, they were hurting for all the people who had come. So, I hope we continue to have that. I'm pretty old now, so I was alive in World War II. And I will tell you, I felt tingles in my heart and I felt pride of fellow humanity that I felt as a very young kid at that time because we all came together and we said, you know what, you're not going to beat us down, you can be diabolical, you can be sneaky, you can make attacks like this man did, but we will survive and we will grow. And as the rabbi said, we will continue to do that. And all I could say is God bless all those families and Las Vegas will continue to be the great place it is and it is good that others understand that. I will ask for, please, a moment of silence, if we could, for those who passed away and who had these very difficult circumstances. Thank you all for being here and joining us in this situation. We now are going to move on with the rest of our meeting. We'll have public comment during this portion of the agenda. It must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. This is your opportunity to address the council. But the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. We will set the time at one minute.
Good morning, Councilwoman and members of the city council. My name is Chondell Newsom, Sum New Marketing, 1951 Stella Lake Street, 89106. I'm just talking about, in particular, business licensing and public works projects. I lobbied in Carson City for 15% for small businesses during the stadium in the LVCVA projects. I'm not here to lobby you guys, I'm here first to commend you guys because I think the business development team is doing an awesome job with some of the business licenses and things that are happening with us at the Urban Chamber of Commerce. But I also want to bring light to you, as you're looking at these different specific items, I want you to take a look at the amount of small businesses that are coming into the city and how are we making sure that they're going to have success? Because what most people don't understand is we focus on the big Teslas and we focus on recruiting all of these folks, but there are some of us who have been here for the last 15 years who have worked very hard to build businesses in this community. And I just want us to look at those items in a different way. And when we talk about public works projects, look at how we can include those small businesses. When we look at any type of business licenses, how do we make sure, ensure the success of those businesses? And if you don't know, the Business Success Center over on Stella Lake Street is designed to help allow those small businesses to not only get off to a good start, but have sustainable success. And I know Councilman Soroka was also part of the Boots to Business program. We're going to be hosting the Reboots to Business program, which helps veterans transition into small business owners. We are 95%. I'm just passionate about that.
And I think that was very good and I think your comments are very meaningful. We just have to keep to the time, but thank you very much.
Mayor, I'd just like to thank Chondell for his leadership as well as that of Ken Evans and others that he works with, with our veterans in our business community.
So, you got out a shout-out there.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I would like to introduce or have my guest introduce herself as well, as she's sitting on the desk with us this morning.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is Katrina McKinney and I'm the president of the Las Vegas Urban Young Professionals. So, I am just shadowing Councilwoman Barlow today so I can get a more, better understanding of city government, to be more effective in my role and getting young professionals and my members more engaged in policy in our community.
Thank you.
You're very welcome here and thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move to item number nine. These are our business items. For possible action, any items that the council staff and/or the applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilwoman Barlow?
Yes, Mayor Protem, the only item that I see, we will pull item 16 forward.
Are there any other items that we're going to obey during the morning session?
Yes, ma'am. We will have item 36 as well as item 37. Item 36 is an abeyance item being requested until October 18th. This request is by Mayor Goodman. And also, item 37, this item is requested to be stricken and this request is by staff. So, those are the two items that I'll bring forward at this time.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Barlow, could we have you read what those subject matters are in 36 and 37, please?
Yes. On item 36, report by the Department of Public Safety staff in discussion for possible action regarding the implementation of ordinance number 6491, which prohibits pet shops from selling or disposing of dogs, cats, or pot-bellied pigs, other than those obtained from an animal care facility or nonprofit animal rescue organization. This is all wards. Item 37, report by Planning Department staff regarding the preparation and development of a new master plan for the city of Las Vegas, all wards.
All right. Any questions? Please vote. The motion carries. We now move to item 10, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the August 16th and September 6, 2017, regular city council meetings. Councilwoman Barlow, can I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move for approval.
Please vote. And the motion carries. We'll now move to item 11. Items 11 through 35, and did you say there was one that was being pulled?
Yes, item 16.
With the exception of item 16 on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine and are recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. I understand that we are pulling item number 16 off of the consent, as Councilwoman Barlow just said, and we will hear that item after we vote on the consent. Excuse me. Thank you. Oh, my goodness. Sorry. I think Councilwoman Barlow put something here to make me sneeze.
Yeah, a lot of pepper, a lot of pepper.
Yes, he did that on purpose. Okay, I'm fine, I got a Kleenex, thank you so much for help, thank you. I understand that we're pulling that item off the agenda, number 16, and we will hear that item after we vote on the consent agenda. Are there any items the council wishes to pull off consent in addition to item 16 that they want to say right now? All right, we'll move on to item 16.
No, we need to vote.
I know that, excuse me. The vote on item 16. No, where are we?
I would like to make a motion that we approve items 11 through 35 with the exception of item 16. That's my motion on the floor at this time.
Very good motion, Mr. Barlow, thank you. Let's have a vote on the motion.
I'm sorry. You're right. Yes.
Keep coughing.
Post.
I took those two off, I thought they were part of the consent.
Only took one off.
I know.
And the motion carries. We now move on to item, would that be 36?
16.
16? Goodness gracious. We now will move on to item 16.
Mayor Protem?
The sneeze has got the bitter of me, I'm afraid. Thank you. Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, could you please read item 16 into the record?
What was that?
So, I'm good.
Yeah, just a second. All right. Thank you very much. For possible action to approve award of contract number 180051 DC, Prime Design Services for Officer Alan Beck Memorial Park, located on the southwest corner of Sky Canyon Park Drive and Iron Mountain Road, Department of Public Works. Award recommended to LR Nelson Consulting Engineers, $134,000, Parks and Leisure Services Capital Project Fund. This is Ward 6 Fiori.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We pulled this item because it is so important that you actually understand and take a few minutes with this item. Alan Beck Park, on June 8, 2014, two officers, Alan Beck and Ilgor Saldo, were ambushed and killed at Cece's Pizza. This tragedy left an enduring impact on the people of Las Vegas and, most importantly, impacted their families' lives forever. Alan Beck has a wife, Nicole, and his children. He's got a son and two daughters. Officer Alan Beck's family live in Las Vegas in Ward 6 and they pass this park every day. Well, Alan Beck's park has remained unfinished for too long and when I took office, I said this was our first priority and we're making it our first priority. It's important to get this park done for the memory of Officer Alan Beck, as a reminder of the great service our police officers provide our community every day. In light of the events on Sunday, it is especially important that we honor those that have fallen and I take great pride in supporting all of our first responders and approving this contract is a good first step. I also want to use this action to remember Cameron Robinson, one of our own here at the city of Las Vegas, one of the members of the city of Las Vegas family. He will be greatly missed. And with that, Madam Protem, I move to approve item 16.
Any other comments from the council? Post and the motion passes. With great pride from all of us, Michelle, we'll move now to item number 36.
Mayor Protem, that was strict, that was obeyed?
It was obeyed, 36 and 37, so we move to item number 38. You see, we're clearing up things very rapidly here. Item number 38 concerns boards and commissions. Discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of Donald L. Hotchkiss Jr. to the Historic Preservation Commission. Mr. Hotchkiss serves as the Category 3 member experienced in building construction. Originally appointed in November of 2011, Mr. Hotchkiss is eligible and wishes to be reappointed. Staff is recommending reappointment. Our recommendation from staff is to reappoint Mr. Hotchkiss. Our advice staff to put an agenda on the item at a future meeting to consider another nominee qualified for Category 3. Councilwoman Coffin, I understand you're prepared to make a recommendation?
I am, thank you, Mayor Protem. Yes, Mr. Hotchkiss has given valuable service to the Historic Preservation Commission, fits all the requirements and wishes to be reappointed, so I move for his reappointment.
Please vote on the motion. Post. And the motion carries. We now move to item number 39, which is discussion for possible action regarding the appointment of nominee Tom Perrigo to the Building and Safety Enterprise Fund Advisory Committee. Mr. Knight, Director of Building and Safety, has retired from the city of Las Vegas and a replacement must be named. The city manager recommends the appointment of Mr. Perrigo. That will be my motion, to appoint Mr. Perrigo. Please vote on the motion. Please vote on the motion. Post. And the motion carries. We move to item number 40. Recommending committee bills eligible for adoption at a later meeting.
Mayor Protem, Tarkanian, item 40 and 41 are a second reading of two bills, so they are being considered just a second reading. Item 40 and 41 are the second reading of bills, so they don't need to be considered by the council.
Right. Items 40 and 41, bills number 2017-19 and 2017-33 will be held at a later meeting, so we will now move on to the new bills. And this is 42 and 43, and these new bills will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Monday, October 16, 2017. City Attorney, would you read the new bills?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill number 2017-34, in ordinance to amend LVMC Chapter 6.82, to authorize smoke shops to sell marijuana paraphernalia and provide for other matters related. And bill number 2017-35, in ordinance relating to short-term residential rentals and associated hosting platforms, amending LVMC Chapter 6.75 to adopt provisions to implement enabling language of Chapter 347 Statutes of Nevada 2017, to require the submission of quarterly reports from hosting platforms and operators, and to establish subpoena requirements with respect thereto, and providing for other related matters.
Thank you very much. New bills 2017-34 and 2017-35 are assigned to the recommending committee members, Councilwoman Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin. If any so designated are unable to attend, the clerk's office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at the mayor's direction. We'll now move on to item number 44. And that is to set the date on any appeals fired or require, excuse me, set the date on any appeals filed or required public hearings. Do we have any of this? I would instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates, and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings are nuisance litter abatements.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. We'll now move on to item number 45. And this is citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium and give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address the council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Yes, sir.
Very good speech. Everyone is good at speaking, but no actions. The only people in this council that do something for the community is Establos Anthony and Michelle Fiori. The rest of you are useless. My name is Rolando Larraz.
Sir, excuse me. You have to give your name and add, please.
My name is Rolando, R-O-L-A-N-D-O, Larraz, L-A-R-R-A-Z-E-S, Zebra. I'm the owner, the founder of the Las Vegas Tribune newspaper, and I'm a resident of Las Vegas, probably before some of you was born, 63 years in this town. I love this town, and this is the only city that I know that doesn't have a live telephone operator, because you guys are completely out of touch with your voters unless you are in election year. Michelle Fiori and Establos Anthony is the only two people that I know in this council that answer the phone when you call them. Yesterday, I called here trying to call my councilman, Mr. Bob Coffin, because his liaison twice stood me up, twice, on Friday and on Monday, like I'm a little kid, like I'm a baby, and I don't like to be treated with disrespect. I demand the respect. I deserve respect, because I live here, and I work here, and I, I care for this city. You guys are useless. That's what I had to say. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, and I'm very pleased to tell you that there are other people in the community who do disagree with what you say. Thank goodness, because those of us up here give a lot of time and energy and heart. And I think the letter you sent me was racist.
That was a hit and run. He'd never left any messages at our office. Thank you.
And I will also tell, I will tell you it was racist because you accused us going, letting somebody build someplace just because they were Mexican and that we favored Mexicans. We're done. We're done, sir. We are done. Please leave. You have finished. Can I have security, please?
Oh, please.
And you know what? I just want to thank whoever wrote that letter to the editor last Sunday that praised my staff for what they did on a Sunday that makes us feel okay for all the hard work we put in.
Hello.
Yes.
My name is Maurice Danel Cooper. My address is 1048 Hassel Avenue, Las Vegas, Nevada, 1096.
Thank you.
Is my zip code. The reason why I'm here is because I came to your council a few months ago when I was having a very tough time trying to find a job. I came here, and y'all helped me out, and y'all helped me find the job. I was working for the Salvation Army for a period of time. It was a very good job. I really enjoyed it, and I seen that my presence was making a difference. The homeless people was coming in, they was getting cleaned up, they was very comfortable with dealing with me, I was very comfortable with dealing with them. However, the employees that was employed at the time, you know what I mean, it made it, it was more of a problem with the employees than it was with the people that was there. The job was contracted for a period of time up until the 25th of this month right here. Then they would make a decision whether they would keep me or whether they would let me go. They never had any reason to let me go. I was always on time, I was always punctual, I was always doing my job, and I was always there to help. So on the 26th, I went to my supervisor, and I asked my supervisor, I said, "Am I going to stay? Are you going to keep me?" He sent me to another alleged supervisor that I don't even know who this individual was. I didn't respect the individual because the individual was not professional, and the individual, he was the type of person that I was speaking of when I come to the employees. However, my supervisor sent me to this individual and asked me to inquire whether my status. The individual informed me that my services will no longer be needed. He said they was letting me go because they were short on staff or for whatever reasons they was letting me go. Okay, I was really upset. I'm going to be honest with you. I was really upset. I was hurt. I was bothered, because I knew I was going to have a very difficult time finding a job. After that happened, you know, I, it resulted into me having an altercation with one of the shelter patrons, one of the shelter people that stays there. After the incident happened, we goes back to the supervisor, and the supervisor tells me, he says, "We're letting you go because of the incident," meaning that he's not letting me go because of what the gentleman had told me earlier.
Sir, excuse me, but you know, we, we can't intervene in that type of situation where it's your job and a public person. What is it you, how do you feel we can help you? Is what I'm saying.
Well, the reason why is because when I came here, you know, you are the ones that helped me get the job. And, you know, I'm just kind of like, I appreciated it. It was a good job, but what happened wasn't right. So I'm just kind of like basically coming and letting y'all know what's going on.
I see. That it, that didn't work out.
Right.
Was it Mr., was it Rolando who helped him when he was here? I remember when you came, and I believe the mayor had you speak with a member of staff, right? Do you remember who it was?
I don't remember the exact name, but I do have the business card of the organization that they sent me to.
Well, what I wanted to say is that we have no authority over a private business in who they hire and they don't hire, unless, you know, there's some other thing that could be shown. I wonder if we could have somebody from staff just meet with him? Maybe there's something, thank you very much, Karen, that you could help him with, and you can let her know and give her the card. And, but, but sir, I am not aware, unless somebody else is on staff, or somebody else is in the council, of any way we have authority to help him as far as when you're working on a job. They are the people in charge, and our city does not have authority in that situation.
I understand.
But if you talk with Karen, I think she will try and help you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And I thank you for coming, and I thank you for telling us how much you appreciated us getting you the job.
All right.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? All right. I believe we have reached the end of the agenda. And that is, if we have any, the council member recognition, comments made by your individual city council members during this portion of the agenda, they're not acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Sir, were you coming to speak? Oh, okay, thank you. Are there members of the council who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? We could start with...
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And these are just the wrap-up comments at the end of our, our regular council session meeting. So just want to again acknowledge that our city, in the wake of the tragedy, is a grieving community, and our sincerest condolences and wishes to the families and friends of those affected by the tragedy, and may we continue as a community to unify and move forward. And if you would like to continue to help, please look at the services on this slide where you can donate blood, and if you'd like to contribute in some other way to help our community, these are some resources you can go to, to, to help out. And as we move forward, our community needs to continue to rise up and defy what this kind of an action would like to inspire in us. We need to come together as a community and continue our quality of life. And in a few weeks, we, we have some more happy events coming forward where we can come together as a community, and we can look at our, the trunk-or-treat event where we can come together at the Veterans Memorial Center on October 14th. And as we go forward to the weeks after that, in November, we have a shredding event where you can bring your resources to be disposed of properly. And last, if you'd like to continue to reach out to city council, please look on our social media sites where you can contact us, both at our office and on, through social media. So just want to thank you for your time, and I want to congratulate the community for coming together to help those that visit us on a regular basis, that on a one-time basis, and how we've taken care of each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let's start down the end. Councilwoman, would you like to give your comments?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So with our end of comments, we're going to, again, I'm going to thank the staff and my peers for approving our consent item 16 for Officer Alan Beck. You should be able to see a slide of Officer Alan Beck and to his family. We are getting that park on its way. And secondly, I want to just, in memory of our own Cameron Robinson, to his family and his boyfriend, Robert, our hearts are with you, and we feel the loss here with him not being with us. On Oktoberfest is October 7th, from 11:00 to 11:00, at the Market Grill Cafe at 7070 North Durango Drive, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. That is going to be a lot of fun, so join me there. It's one of my favorite restaurants in the, in the district. We have our Mondays with Michelle out in our northwest office, and it's always so great. I will be there from noon to 6:00 p.m. No appointment is necessary. You can just barge into the office. It's your office. It's, and I'll be there October 9th from noon to 6:00 to have some fabulous discussions as we did in our prior Monday, and I was, I was very pleased with our first Monday. Of course, being Italian, we'll have food and soda and water and snacks, so please join me at our northwest office, your northwest office at the Y, on October 9th from noon to 6:00. And then, we're going to have fun on Friday, October 13th. We are going to do a movie in the park, and we're going to see Casper, How Appropriate for Friday the 13th. We have also partnered up with AMR Ambulance. They will be providing candy, and we will have, of course, our free popcorn and water, so please come and watch Casper with me and my daughters and my grandchildren on Friday, October 13th at 7:00 p.m. It's going to be a lot of fun, and I just want to remind everyone that we are Vegas strong, and all, and I also want to just give my peers a little love after that little sting. I love all you guys, and I love working with you, too, and you are fabulous in each and every one of your wards. So, and I always end with telling my mom who's watching, "I love you, Mom, and I love you, Las Vegas. We are Vegas strong." Thank you.
Could we now have Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, ma'am. The Ward 3 is saddened, obviously, as the rest of the town is. We're used to the sounds of gunfire sometimes in the downtown area, and or sometimes I hope they're just firecrackers, but we never get steeled to the sound of rapid-fire weapons, and so we're all still shaken by the sound and the sight of what happened at the massacre Sunday night, October 1st. So I know that my colleague has mentioned the memory of young Cameron Robinson, our employee, and so I certainly want to have him in my prayers, as well as Officer Washington, was it?
Charleston Hadfield.
Charleston Hadfield. Thank you, Councilman. Charleston Hadfield is the off-duty Metro officer who gave his life trying to help people. And so this strikes home with a lot of people who know each other. Some interested citizens have come forward, and at this moment, a park in memory of all the lost on October 1st is being constructed in Ward 3. We will dedicate it Friday, and I can't disclose the location right now, but it is hopefully a place where we can all come to Friday evening and stand together in memory of all those people who have given their lives and their, and we have given our trust to.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to inform the community that my next coffee with the councilman will take place on October 5th, Thursday, October 5th, located at Starbucks, 1925 North Martin Luther King Boulevard. So if you're wanting to come out and speak to me in regards to any of your business affairs or community activities or events, please come on out, October 5th, starting at 9:00 a.m., Starbucks at Martin Luther King and Lake Mead. Additionally, the Durfelt Senior Center is hosting craft classes, which are already in progress, so if you are interested in crafting, please reach out to the Durfelt Senior Center, and they may be contacted at 229PLAY, P-L-A-Y, 229PLAY, for more information. information. The Dulittle Community Center is offering martial arts classes on Tuesday and Thursday for youth ages six years and older. They are also offering belly samba dance classes on Thursday evenings. For more information, please contact the Dulittle Community Center at two two nine PLAY, that's two two nine P-L-A-Y. Also, at the Dulittle Community Center on October twenty-sixth, there's a Community Spooktacular Carnival. This will take place on October twenty-sixth from five PM to seven PM. There will be games, movies, snacks, a jump house, trick-or-treats while supplies last. There will also be a costume contest for the best-dressed family, most original, scariest, and most creative costume. So for more information on how to get involved and bring your young people out to the Community Spooktacular Carnival, October twenty-sixth, please contact the Dulittle Community Center at two two nine six three seven four. The Municipal Pool Halloween at the Pool Event is taking place on October twenty-eighth, so there's a lot of Halloween activities for the entire family to enjoy. The Municipal Pool is located at Dula on Bonanza, four thirty-one East Bonanza Road, and they will host the Halloween at the Pool Event with witches, wizards, and water on Saturday, October twenty-eighth, from twelve noon to five PM. Join in on the fun for good music, fun games, crafts, and more. For more information, please contact the Dula Community Center at two two nine six three zero nine. Of course, First Friday in downtown, um, Las Vegas, uh, the First Friday Foundation of Las Vegas, uh, will celebrate their fifteenth-year anniversary Friday at the, uh, at Casino Center, Artway, Las Vegas Boulevard, um, Las Vegas eighteen B Arts District. And, um, this is taking place on October sixth from five to eleven PM, so come on out to show your support to this event hosted in, uh, the heart of the Arts District, which is a lot of fun, so I wanted to, uh, make mention of that as well. And of course, the Nevada Promise Scholarship, the College of Southern Nevada, has a program to make college accessible and affordable. Nevada Promise Scholarship helps pay for up to three years of tuition and mandatory fees, so if there's any parents out there looking for scholarship opportunities for their young man or young lady, please contact, um, the College of Southern Nevada. The application process is online, so please send an email to promise@csn.edu or call six five one seven five zero zero for more information. And of course, you may always follow me on a variety of social media platforms, Facebook, Twitter, um, as well as just contacting my office direct at two two nine five four four three, or reach out to me via email at lasvegasnevada.gov/wardfive. Thank you, Mayor, for a stellar meeting today, and in closing, I would like to part with, um, thanking the first responders and those visitors and residents who came together as a community of one once again to support Las Vegas during, uh, this recent tragic event, and, uh, God bless each and every one as they continue to recover and their families, and, uh, I pray that we continue to work together as a community to protect, um, not only our state, our city, but our residents alike. So, thank you so very much for a speedy meeting today, Mayor, you did a wonderful job. And I believe it's a record, this is the, I believe we've, we've never been, uh, done so soon, but I'll have the clerk check that.
I'm glad you do that, thank you so very much. Uh, as far as Ward One is concerned, we will have a shredding and drug turn-in this Saturday, October seventh, and, uh, we will also have prescription drugs turned in at the same time, from ten o'clock to noon, in the Community College parking lot, which is north of the Opportunity Village Building at sixty-three hundred West Oakie Boulevard. It is a safe and secure way to dispose of documents, and it's also a safe and secure way to dispose of medicines and, uh, other things which we have that we don't want to flush down the toilet, we don't want it to go down the sink, we don't want it to endanger our water supply in any way, so please bring any, no matter how small the drugs, in order that they can be taken care of by the appropriate officials. Residents are limited to five boxes of bundles of paper per vehicle, and any size box or bundle is acceptable. City marshals will also be at the event to accept expired and no longer used prescription medicine. We will have Halloween fun and spooky treats, uh, for children age seven to twelve at the Mirabella Community Center on Thursday, October fifth, from five thirty to seven PM. They're going to have an opportunity to create spooky treats to take home. The cost is fifteen dollars, pre-registration is required. For more information, please call seven oh two 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 nine six three five nine. And then, the Leeburn Senior Center is going to have another one of their great chili cook-off luncheons on Friday, October twentieth, at eleven thirty PM. Anybody who wants to come and not make the chili can pay six dollars, and they get to have some of the chili that, uh, is involved in the contest. And it's, so far in the past, it's been fabulous. For more information, please call seven oh two 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 nine one six zero zero. And lastly, I'd like to say, this horrific experience was, of course, the reason why Carolyn wasn't with us at this time, and, uh, she's working for our council and for our city, uh, meeting with President Trump, and, of course, you learn from everything. We were so good, our responders, we followed through on every single thing. In fact, I, I just have to tell you people this, my son, who was on CNN, uh, mentioned that he had talked with me, and I had bragged to him before on how well our people were working together. Remember when we all visited it and they trained us? All the staff that did that, thank you so much, and he told the world on CNN about how hard we had worked. And, um, uh, our hearts are heavy, but doggone it, we're tough, we're really tough, and we are strong, as she said, Las Vegas Strong, uh, Las Vegas Strong, and we'll keep that way, and, uh, we'll rise as we've risen already, and we'll continue to rise. Thank you very much, the meeting is adjourned.